The visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So, first thing on the agenda is a regional update. And we have, Tim, you were there, right?
I was.
And Tim McCormick, you were there?
Yes.
You guys mind giving the update?
So, the update, the regionalization committee has voted to approve the current draft of the contract. We did have to change the dates. So, what's going to the school committees of all, all three towns, or their district and our district, is this contract, but because of the timelines the state requires, in order to meet the way it's currently drafted, we would have had to have the whole town vote on it and all three towns vote to approve it before the end of this year, which would have started the clock ticking on January twenty twenty five. So, we've moved it one year, so we have, we have to by the, you know, I'd say the second third of next year have this approved so that we can get all the paperwork into the state. At which point, a transition period would be in place from January twenty twenty six to June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. And as a teaser to the viewers at home, I will, if everyone wants, I can read this out loud at the school committee meeting, our next school committee meeting, trying to drum up viewership, so.
You like doing that, don't you?
That's my thing. I'm town crier. Yeah, so that's where we are. We voted as a committee to push it through to the towns for, now the next step would be the school committees have to approve it, then it goes before the town and gets on a ballot. And just obviously some discussion and stuff that happened prior to that, too.
So, what do we be trying to get it on for like the May or June ballot?
It would be, yeah, that sort of scenario. So, the plan is, given that the school committee most likely wants to talk about it a little bit, too, I'm gonna, we'll, we'll read it next meeting, which are next week, right?
Yeah.
Next Monday. So, next Monday, we'll read it. The school committee will have all copies of it. And then, we wouldn't take a vote on it as a committee until the month after.
Okay.
Just so we have time to discuss, handle any questions. Because, you know, it's not something, something like this, I don't want to just drop it on everyone and then we vote right then.
Right.
We need some time to digest, so. That's why we push the timeline and basically, the, the, in the, the short, shortened suite of it is, were this regional district to form, it would be a nine-member school committee, three from each town. And the school committee, because it's a regional district, they said we have, the lawyer that was involved in the process said we have to go on the biannual state election schedule. Is when the school committee elections would happen, so it would kind of tweak the way we elect our school committee, but it would be three members basically running every two years to stay on the committee.
All right.
And then, a lot of other stuff about just where things are, what buildings are what. In this particular contract, the way it's drawn up, grade six through eight would be in our current high school. And high school would be Quabog, and then each town would maintain its own elementary school. There's a lot of other legal jargon, so tune in next Monday.
Okay. And we can post this to the website, right?
Yes.
So, people can see it?
You know anyone that has a copy of it?
Sorry?
No, I was asking Jason if he knew anyone that might have a copy of this.
I have one. Yep, I do. Actually, it's my wife's copy.
Yeah.
So, I can't mark it up too much.
We did get copies. Sheila LeBlanc sent it.
Yeah, there are, there are electronic versions, but they don't, they don't have the current dates on them. So, we, we kind of voted on them, on it as amended with these current dates.
Did anybody have anything else that they wanted to add to that, or Tim, did you have anything?
No, I think Tim was pretty clear. I think that, I think what needs to be just restated that if this were to go through with all three communities, it's still, we're still looking at the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year before this actually happens. So, this isn't going to happen within the next twelve years or even fiscal year. This is going to happen three years from now. If it gets voted in.
So, the first, the first school year as a district would start?
September.
September of twenty twenty seven.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you guys have anything?
No.
No?
Nope. Anybody else? Okay. All right, and like we said, it'll be posted on the town website for people to look at and read up. If they have any questions, feel free to forward them. All right, fiscal year twenty-six budget. Where do you want to start with that?
Well, I want to know, first off, what, what new challenges will we, we be facing from the school department?
Well, I think there's, there's a few, and we've had a few conversations about these, but as you know, all of our ESTRA funds have now been expended. So, ESTRA one, two, and three are the rounds of funding we received from the federal government during COVID and after COVID. So, those have all been expended, so we do not have that support system in place right now. We did get some good information this past week or so around OSD, Operational Service. That number is coming in around four percent. So, if you may recall, two years ago, it was around fourteen percent. And that is the amount, or that's the increase in cost that we have to incur for some of our special education placements. So, there was a huge increase, increase two years ago. It dropped about six percent last year, and they're estimating around four percent this year. So, it's still an increase to the district, but it's not as, as egregious as fourteen percent. So, that's a good thing. We will be starting contract negotiations fairly soon with both our teachers' union and our custodial union. So, those are two bargaining units that we have not talked to. You know, those, their contracts are ending this year, so we finished up our EBA's last year. That's in effect this year, but we're, we're going to be incurring some additional costs for those bargaining units. Those are some of the biggest drivers. You know, we entered into a five-year contract with our bus company a few years ago, so we've kept that cost pretty consistent at six percent increase per year. And then, just looking at our, our supplies and materials, you know, there's, there's always going to be an increase there, but we've done a very good job of locking in our oil company bid over the last couple of years, so we're not seeing huge rates, huge increases with our fuel costs for the, for the two schools. So, it, it's, you know, I, I think that we, we have some work to do. I would like to hear, you know, kind of some of the ideas from the, from the community, from the town. I know we had several conversations last year with, with the finance committee about some options and some ideas that, you know, I hope, I hope we talk about tonight. But I think that it's, it's something that we need to, you know, continue on these conversations. I think just, you know, be, be cautious with how we project our finances, but also, we've, we've done a pretty good job in the last couple of years of looking at what grant opportunities can we utilize to bring additional funding for some of our programs. But that's not a way that we can fully balance a budget, so we, we need to have those conversations.
And then, with the, when do you expect to start the negotiations?
Well, we have to kind of set the date, but I, I would assume sometime this fall.
They've officially reached out, right?
They have officially reached out. They sent a letter to Mr. McGarriero a few weeks ago, so we have to set up, firm up a date. We would start those, I would, I'd venture a guess probably in November at some point.
Okay, well, make sure you don't forget to let us know, because we got to send somebody. So, you said you talked to the finance committee and had some ideas and things to toss around that you want to talk about tonight? Do you, do you know what those were?
I do, yeah.
All right.
The, the one thing that's been said for the past two years, and this is something that I know everybody's aware of, is, is we, we have discussed the possibility of an override. Either a general override or a targeted override. I think that it's something that we at least need to explore, we need to talk about it and plan for it, if that's in fact the, the route we want to go. It's been, like I said, it's been talked about for the past couple of years with both finance committee, school board. I know Mr. Khan and I attended a lot of those meetings last year. And, and the hope was to at least have some conversations around how that would look for the community and get the information out to the community as early as possible. So, it wasn't something that we were just doing on a, a May or June ballot without any conversation and planning. Again, I know that a lot of small communities are looking for, for overrides. It, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a crapshoot whether they're successful or not, but it's something that if we want to explore it, I think we need to start sooner or later and, and have those conversations.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
I just remember that was a topic of conversation last year. We had kind of looked into it and ran some numbers and percentages on what it would be at that time. I'm sure that number might change slightly. I mean, at least we're not expecting any huge increases in costs this year, hopefully. Still early, but it's, it's something we can at least look at before we make any decisions on anything, certainly. Nobody's of the mind that we're doing anything or not doing anything, but exploring options is certainly something we need to look at.
Anybody else? So, okay.
We, we talked in the finance committee, it's mentioned in, all over the place. It's a revenue problem. Town needs to figure out, you know, the costs are going up. Everything, everything gets more expensive. And we need to figure out how to get that additional revenue to cover these costs, not just for the school, but for everything else in town, too, that is also getting more expensive. So, it's a conversation that's, in my opinion, has been kicked down the, the road for the last couple of years. And it's time to really take a serious look and actively figure out what that looks like.
Well, I'm sure we could look at it. I'm pretty sure it'd be a tough sell, because, you know, with all the building going on, taxes have gone up. I know I've gotten, you know, I've had a lot of people that have voiced their concerns about the costs. I know mine went up considerably. And then, you know, this is going to go on for a while, so we do have an elderly population that's all on fixed income, so they're having a hard time, you know, affording their medications and their heat and all that stuff. So, it's going to be a difficult sell.
Yeah, it's, well, part, part of the thing is, is not just asking for more money. Part of it is getting the message out on how seniors on fixed incomes can qualify for relief on tax increases and things like that. There are programs out there, and there are exemptions, there are waivers, and I, I don't know that that message gets to everyone. I don't know what the, I don't know the solution for that. I'm not a communications guy. But I think it's, it's, it's a whole package. It's, it's, we have to look at both what the additional revenue would be, whether it would be worth it, and also how to help those who would potentially be put in a bad position by this. So, it's not just you need to pay us this much money, it's here's a list of ways that we can help you work through this and support the town, because there, there are offsets and there are ways that the state can assist in that sort of stuff. So, it's a, it's kind of a holistic approach to the whole thing. It's not just, you know, putting a hat out in the center of town, hoping somebody throws some cash in it. Need a big hat.
Do you have something?
Well, I was just gonna kind of piggyback, piggyback on what Tim said, but it's, I'd rather not take a, a negative approach to it out of the gate. I'd, I'd rather us kind of look at everything and not just assume that people are, are completely unable to do the things that we're asking. And then also to define what they're getting for this increase. Like, how are, how are the ways we're improving if you're giving more money and we're, we're increasing our tax rate?
Something worth noting, since we talked about regionalization, too. A regionalization contract changes the way the town pays for the school.
Yep.
You know, right now, Mr. McCormick puts together a very detailed budget. We bring it to the finance committee and they say, nope, you need to go do this. It's not that same process with, with a regionalization.
No, it's not.
So, there's, there's that to consider as well. Where down the road, we might need that. We need to figure out a revenue source either way, because it's, it's something where, you know, because we're a town, if you don't spend it, we can set it aside and be ready for something to happen. And right now, we're not, we're just keeping our heads above water across the board on all, all departments, so. I think it's, whether it affects the school or not, it's a conversation that the town needs to have. I have, I, I have the twenty twenty-one budget, and we had the tax rates of towns. And from my understanding, the tax rate's actually gone down in town. This had us at almost two dollars per thousand higher in twenty twenty-one than we are right now.
Okay.
So, I, I don't understand how in a budget crunch that has happened, but it has. And maybe these numbers aren't accurate, maybe my numbers for currently aren't accurate, but I don't think the town's like getting greedy and asking for a lot from, from people.
I mean, when, you know, as part of the finance committee, we ran some of these numbers, I think it was last year, for a potential override. I think it was Bob had the breakdown of what the average valued household in town would pay based off of a certain percentage of what a different override would look like. So, I mean, again, that's something we could explore to see what that would look like.
Do you have those numbers handy, Bob?
Right now?
You did do that, though, right?
I just saw that, I think Joe did the breakdown on the per unit or per house. He didn't look at it.
Well, I suppose it doesn't hurt to look at it.
Right. Again, this is the first meeting, so we're trying to lay it all out here and figure out where we go from here, because obviously we can't have these meetings. It's better to put it into smaller committees, get the finance committee more involved so that we can all actually get into the numbers. Entertaining television as reading a bunch of spreadsheets is.
I look forward to it.
Yeah.
So, in the event, so obviously, this would be something we would do or look at prior to the upcoming budget, right?
Yeah.
So, it wouldn't really affect the regionalization process. It would be the current school. And then, because we don't even know if the town's going to, town, all three towns are going to vote
Right.
for regionalization, so we still have to prepare. Do you know how much the school would need in an override?
I don't have those numbers in front of me right now. I can have, I can get those projections.
All right, and what, so that would obviously be based upon, you know, future contracts? And then, whatever else? And I suppose we could do the same thing on, on our end. Come up with the numbers.
I would like to point out, too, Mr. McCormick won't say it, but it feels like the high school is kind of turning a little bit of a corner here. There's some, some cool new programs. We, we did a walk-around at the beginning of the year. They've got the shop back up and running, which
Oh, nice.
And the, the small engine repair thing, there are a bunch of lawnmowers down there, so kids can take a class and learn how to fix small engines, which I honestly want to go take that class, too. So, even on the limited budget, like, they're, they're, they're getting a lot of appealing programs that are actually drawing a couple of kids back from some of the
Excellent.
some of the ones that have ventured out to other schools, and they're starting to look at, oh yeah, maybe I'll go back to North Brookfield, because they do have some of these cool new things. A nice, I forget the name of the computer program is, but that, that grant we got for the, the computer lab and the, and the design and stuff like that, there's
Yeah, that's the ICP grant.
Yeah, so there's
Yeah.
There's some, some, it's some cool new programs without really affecting the bottom line that are, are hopefully making the school, and it feels that way. It feels like there's a little different energy in there at the school, and the kids are really, really involved. They're, they, they really get into things, so. Just, it's just personal observation. I've seen that.
So, just, those programs sound good. So, you said you have the shop up and working, like the wood shop, or just, it's shop in general where that, that's where the lawnmowers are, that's where?
So, it used to be, I think maybe ten, twelve years ago, it was more of a, a wood shop classroom. When I arrived in North Brookfield, it was basically a storage area that was just full of lots of stuff that had not been used for years. We cleaned that out. We made it into kind of a working STEM lab. And last year's, the, STEM teacher last year and our STEM teacher this year have turned it into a, a facility that can be used for things like small engine repair. We have some, some, you know, we still have access to some woodworking tools in there that, that have been res serviced and, and work. And we also have a robotics lab that we bring our robotics down to that, that space to kind of build those, those robotics platforms. So, it's, it's kind of still evolving, but it's a very functional workspace right now where it wasn't a year and a half ago. So, I mean, my intent tonight was to just start the conversation around this, and I, and I think, as Tim mentioned, as a few other people mentioned, this is not solely for the school, talking about the, the override proposal. This will be for the whole community, but the school is a big part of that. It's something that in my short time here, you know, this is my, my fourth year in the, in the district. For the past two years, we've talked about it, but really nothing's kind of come to fruition. So, I'm hoping we could at least continue the conversation where we could bring some numbers to the table and start to look at how we message this to the community.
All right. Anybody have anything they want to add to that?
Well, I just have to think of, you know, an override is one potential solution. We need to have a plan B in case, you know, the town decides against it. We need to figure out what's going to be the alternative if that happens. We have to keep that in the back of our minds, too, if we do go forward with this. We can't put everything into one solution, so. It's another thing we have to think about.
Typically, that means cuts, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we've been doing for the past three years, is we just continue to cut, which is trying to avoid some of those major cuts, because I don't know, you know, projecting out for FY twenty-six, you know, we, we have very few places to cut. And when you, you try to, to, to get big sums of money from, from a budget, it's, it's usually human capital. It's usually people you're cutting, positions. So, you know, we, we don't have many positions to cut anymore.
All right.
The, the other, the other question I had, and just a conversation point, is Medicaid reimbursement. You know, every school district, to my knowledge, is involved with Medicaid reimbursement. The money that, that we receive back goes back to the town's general fund. Most municipal school districts, that money goes back to offset special ed costs. Is that a conversation that, that we could explore down the road?
I don't really know anything about it, so sure.
Yeah, I have no idea about it.
How much do you get in Medicaid?
Uh, last year was seventy-two thousand.
Seventy-two thousand?
Yeah.
And that goes into the general fund, you think?
Correct.
Okay. Well, we can talk about anything.
Every, every little bit helps, too, because the special education is a, is a big, big chunk of the budget every year. And it's something that we really can't work around. Like, you can't cut that. We have to make sure those kids have an education, so. The rest of the school, it gets, gets hit by it, so.
Bob, talking about revenue, there's one area that we've never attempted to tap that I'm aware of. And I know it's basically a taboo, but none, tax-exempt properties. We have some significant properties in town that are tax-exempt. My personal feeling is they should be pulling their share, and if they don't have enough support to contribute that, then maybe they shouldn't exist. But aside from that, I believe places like Boston have asked for voluntary
We've done that.
We've done that.
We have done that.
We sent out the layers to the nonprofits.
Very recently, yes.
Two weeks?
Two weeks ago, I think.
Last week, or last week or the week before, I sent out letters to
Two weeks, I think.
So, within the last two weeks?
I would like to propose something else, too, which is even more radical. I mean, we got, we have to look at this. Trying to tax some of these properties for just the services they receive, fire, police, highway. Leave the school out of it, and see if we can get, get around that. I don't know if we can, we can do it. I think
Well, I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, they are tax exempt for a reason, so.
They're federally tax exempt.
You have to
Well, anyway, that was included in our letter, was just mentioning the, all the fire services and the other services that are provided within the town and to ask if they would help support, so. I mean, I could make, make, be a secondary follow-up letter, I guess, but
I just think that the, the two biggest ones in town are going to volunteer.
They might not.
Yeah, I don't think they will. I mean, the school, they were going to contribute, I believe, to the fires department or to the town after they had that fire. I don't believe they ever did.
Oh, you're talking about Valley View?
Yeah.
Oh, I was thinking of the school. I was like
The camp, I mean, this is probably, well, the camp's probably well worthwhile. The school is a, I mean, that's, to me, that's the, I don't know why it's not a profit. It's, someone's getting the money somewhere. But, you know, these, these are facilities that do use services or do occasionally need services. And the town has to be prepared for servicing them. So, I think it's only right that we push the issue. And I would go so far as even with churches. Maybe not the, the church itself, but all the properties they own, other than that. You know, I mean
Well, the churches were included in our letter as well, so churches and the Valley View, school, they were all included.
A lot of the church properties are for sale anyways, so.
I know, yes, some, yeah.
We could potentially invite them to speak with us. I mean, that doesn't hurt, whether they're going to answer that or not.
Well, see what we get for responses first.
Yeah, yeah, it's too early to tell at the moment, but
Just, just looking for any kind of revenue that would make sense. That there's a logic to, aside from just going to the state. I mean, there are other, I mean, there are, there are state programs, but I forget the name of it, but there's one who would require some tax, property tax increase. I forget the name of that one. Mike, you might know it. It's, I guess it's pretty popular in the state.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Somehow, there's some matching from the state on it. I, I, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have brought it up. I don't remember the name of it. Find it again. But anything, you know, anything at all, if people come up with, no matter how crazy it may sound at first, I think the more it settles in, the more logical they become.
All right, well, certainly bears some thought. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions to superintendent. The transportation contract, you said, is, is it six percent, is that six percent every year fixed? Or is there any relief, like expenses for fuel, probably ten percent lower this year than last year? So, there's no adjustment there?
We have a five-year contract, so it's thirty percent, so it's six percent, it's six percent a year.
It's fixed, there's no
It's fixed, correct, correct.
And when you're going to negotiate with the schoolteachers, so hypothetically, the, the proposal to regionalize has legs. Would you do a contract to match maturities with, let's say that started in September of twenty-seven, so you would go through fiscal year twenty-seven with, with your contract negotiations with the teachers? And then, when you, if there was a regional contract, that it'd have to be collective with all the teachers within the new district?
Yeah, I, I mean, they're three-year, they're three-year contracts.
This one's a two-year contract because of previous regionalization.
Yeah, um, no, this is the third year. This is the third year. Yep, it got, this is the third year of the contracts. So, it would be another three-year contract.
We had an out clause if we were to regionalize.
If we were in the process, yeah. So, this is the, the last year. To answer your question, so there is, there is some language in, in the original decision agreement that if we do in fact regionalize, currently, North Brookfield pays more than Quabog, so we have to negotiate based on those rates, so we couldn't go lower than what we currently pay. It would be a new three-year contract.
And lastly, with statistics, you have to submit the DESI for all the district and everything.
Correct.
So, as of this month, where do you stand versus last year as far as student population here within the school system?
Yeah, so the, October one was the submission date. We should find out the, the firm numbers this week, actually. We're up a little bit, receipt, school choice receiving in, so that, that's a, that's a good thing for us. We're seeing, in the last two weeks, I, I signed six or seven letters that I can think of of students school choicing in. But we're still upside down, so we have more students who are going out than coming in. And it's the, it's the same district, so we're seeing students leave for, for Quabog, as we've talked about, for Quabon, for, you know, different reasons. But we're slowly starting to kind of curb that, and we're seeing more kids coming back. But we're slowly starting to kind of curb that, and we're seeing more kids coming back, not 20 or 30 at a time, but we're trying to pull back just a few here and there.
But it's a positive trend.
It is a positive trend. It is a positive trend. Yet the other piece that's helped us with that is we brought the sixth grade students up to the junior, senior high school, so we now have a true middle school model, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So we're keeping those kids together for a longer period of time and exposing them to what's going on at the junior, senior high level here in North Brookfield, so we're hoping that retains more kids in district. You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else? Yes?
No.
Mike?
Oh, good.
Did you have any other things you wanted to touch on?
No, I really didn't. I think this was, again, I wanted to just start the conversation about those two items, specifically the override was the bigger of the two. But I think if we can, we could maybe form a subcommittee and bring in some other people from the community to discuss this, that would be fantastic.
Well, let's get some, let's look at some numbers first and see what we're going to need to work with, and then go from there, I think is probably the best thing to do.
I think the Finance Committee will want to be involved, too, yeah, so I don't want to make any decisions without them right now.
I have one question about the regionalization, and I don't know if you know the answer to it. It's, I'm told that we're going to retain our legacy costs for teachers if we regionalize, so we're still going to be responsible for retirees and retired health insurance going back for the district as it existed. Will we be exempt from paying the legacy cost of Quabin for teachers that retire before we join the district?
Quabog.
Quabog, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's, it covers both parties, because it's not just retirements, it's building costs, we built the high school, so, you know, if we have a loan that we've taken out, we're still finishing paying that, which is getting close. I think we're almost done with that one.
Yeah, this is the last year.
But there's, there's language in there, like, if, if we decided to build a new school tomorrow, that's on us, because we just decided to build that school for no real reason, and they're not going to take on that burden necessarily. But once the district is formed, then yeah, I can actually, let me get the-
I'm concerned about those legacy costs of their school, but for teachers that have retired in the past.
Yeah, how do we manage that?
Let's see. The whole, section, section four is all about apportionment and payment of costs incurred by the district, and I think, oh, right before that, section three has, talks about the leasing of the buildings, and unpaid balance on any outstanding bonds or notes. At the time of leasing of said buildings, the facilities shall remain the obligation of the member town wherein the building is located. Any bonds or notes issued after North Brookfield joins the district shall be apportioned in accordance with section four, which is how they give you up costs. Trying to skim quickly just to see if I could find the-
Things like capital costs and-
Then the capital cost section.
Page seven. Just the town assessments one, looks like repairs.
Yeah. I don't, the retirement stuff is not jumping out at me, but I remember that conversation happening at some point during the, I think we talked about it when we were negotiating the last teacher contract because of, because of concerns over that.
It was in page 10.
Oh, yeah, yep. For those employees retired from the North Brookfield Public Schools prior to July 1st, 2027, the employer's share of the applicable retiree health insurance premiums and the pension will be paid for by the town of North Brookfield. If an employee worked for the North Brookfield Public Schools prior to the admission of North Brookfield into the district and subsequently retires from the district at a later date, the employer's share of the applicable retiree health insurance premiums and pension will be paid for by the district. So if all of our teachers go over there and then retire, then it's on Quabog as a whole, as a district, to cover it.
That last line.
And then any other liabilities of the North Brookfield Public Schools incurred prior to July 1st, 2027, shall remain the obligation of the town of North Brookfield. And we have, and now part of this whole transition thing, too, is the establishment of a transitional school committee. So the region will have a transitional committee established from the existing members of the school committees in the towns, and that's a, you know, the way the dates lie out, it's almost 18-month process where we, they have to get into the real nitty-gritty on stuff and figure out these final-
One member of the board of selectmen in each town, too, right?
One member of the board of selectmen is a representative as well.
It's going to be way too big, whatever.
Yes.
Does anybody have anything else to add? Dan?
Nope.
Tim or Tim?
No.
Nothing else.
All right, now let's say the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye. I have to adjourn my meeting, too?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Procedure.
Just wanted to give you that one, boy.
Sorry, I was-